Good evening. I'd like to open the Planning Board's special meeting with a joint session with the Town Council here on November 19th. I would like to ask everybody to please turn your cellphones to silent or your pagers to silent.
On behalf of the Tiverton Town Council, I'd like to call to order the Town Council for its special meeting in a joint session with the Tiverton Planning Board for November
First on the agenda this evening is a review of a challenge grant report, Tiverton Commercial Form-Based Code Proposed Zoning Text and Map Amendments and Design Guidelines. It's a north Main Road, it's a Main Road on the north end of town in Bliss Four Corners. There's been a long process to this point with our consulting planners, the Cecil Group, with many meetings, several sidewalks, and a lot of different iterations of the proposed zoning. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ken Buckland of the Cecil Group, who will present an overview of the process that we've undertaken and then get into the specifics of the changes of the different zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. Ken Buckland with the Cecil Group, a principal in a firm out of Boston. We have had past experience in Tiverton and continue to have a good relationship, I think, that we want to continue. So this has been, as the Chairman of the Planning Board said, a long process. And if you're going to be thoughtful about land use and zoning regulations, you have to be careful. You have to think it through and understand the implications, the ramifications of changing land use because it's a very significant investment that people are making in their community. And it requires the thoughtful process that the town government will go through to adopt zoning regulations that make sense. In terms of the goals for this particular project, what we're trying to do was to, we were told we wanted to clarify the existing zoning regulation, define the character of development that would occur in the commercial districts, improve the opportunities that the commercial districts could obtain through investment by private property owners and businesses, to create attractive areas and to help the businesses create those attractive areas. Well, this started even before our process with the, going through the zoning. It started prior to 2009 when the comprehensive plan was revised. And in that process, the comprehensive plan adopted in 2009 focused on a number of future land use issues, which included the commercial areas on Main Road and the Bliss Four Corners, which were the subject of this rezoning effort. It also looked at the rest of the land use within the community as well, too. Based on that, in terms of the implementation of the plan, an RFP, a Request for Proposals, was put out by the town with the title of "From Main Road to Main Street: Using Form-Based Codes to Create Streets of Opportunity." This was possible because of the grant, the challenge grant that was issued by the statewide planning for the purpose of producing the land use implementation that was the zoning for the master plan. Within this RFP, it was requested that consulting firms that were interested apply to the project and present their case as to the purpose of going through this rezoning process. The Cecil Group teamed with two other firms, Union Studios out of Providence and Fitzgerald Halliday out of Connecticut, to round out the team to include both the architects, the urban designers, the planners, and the engineers, that all have to look at form-based codes for the purpose of understanding what the land use potential is and how the code would be applied. We were luckily selected for this process and started into looking at the issues involving the zoning within the town. But at the same time, the council came forward with the concept of a workshop, looking for solutions to planning and zoning issues. Because the form-based code and the commercial districts weren't the only issues that the town was facing in the zoning. The workshop, which we facilitated, provided a number of ideas and issues and possible solutions to problems facing the town regarding land use and zoning. And we found that to be very informative and helpful in terms of our process, understanding the zoning that was in place. Now, when we actually started into the process itself, we had a number of interviews, calls for talking with different groups and people. We had two public meetings that we held to gain information. Those were kind of fun, actually, for us in terms of the input. We used a voting system and an input process so that people could let their ideas about what the character of development and what the issues were for the commercial areas provide us with the opportunity to better understanding what the issues were regarding the commercial areas. Now, there are a number of different commercial zoning districts within the town, and there are a number of different areas where there is general commercial zoning. The two areas that we were focusing on were along Main Road from the state line down to the intersection with Route 24 and the Bliss Four Corners, which both have what's called general commercial zoning districts in place. The focus of our meetings were to understand what, as I said, what the issues were regarding the zoning and what people understood to be the character of the kind of development that they'd like to see within these commercial areas. And taking that, we developed a concept for rezoning. It was a new commercial district with sub-districts. Because what we did was, when we went down, drove through Main Road, drove down and looked at what was going on in terms of commercial development and other development along the road, we saw something that was very different as you stepped down through it. There was a progression of uses and different types of uses along the road. And we knew that you couldn't have just one zoning district in place that would cover all those different variabilities of conditions within the commercial zoning district. We had to focus on what the opportunities were and what the focus should be for each of these different areas. And we came up with three different sub-districts of land use that we thought were appropriate, that we should start considering in terms of the zoning to put in place. And we looked at the zoning that you had in terms of the issues involved in it and proposed a series of five different improvements to the land use regulations, which includes zoning amendments. The five different elements of the zoning as proposed include a change to Article 4, a new Section 19, which would be for commercial districts. And here, within the zoning regulations, here is where we define those different sub-districts within the general commercial zoning areas. We also had to look at the district use regulations, the table of uses in Article 4, and go through those and make some modifications and amendments to those. Now, in terms of form-based code, typically what you think of is just, it's the character, the look, the physical condition of the building, of the development that's potential within the property. But we're also looking at what the uses are of that property as well, too, and what the opportunities are for development within that district. So we've made recommendations in terms of the table of use regulations, adding in the three new commercial sub-districts that we're talking about. We also looked at the zoning map, the district boundaries of the general commercial zoning district that's shown within the current zoning map, official zoning map of the town, and decided that there was a number of issues involved in that. One is that there were some areas where the general commercial zoning district was laid on top of residential development. There was always going to be residential development because there wasn't really a relationship to commercial development potential in there, and they're already established neighborhoods. There were areas where the zoning district didn't cover the whole property line, didn't go to the end of the back side of the property that fronted on the Main Street, on the Main Road and Bliss Four Corners. So that you'd have to think that within that, there'd be a potential conflict with the development that would relate to the difference of two different zoning districts on top of the property. So I thought the idea of a consistent boundary that would follow property lines as a way to distinguish the opportunities within the zoning that would come along with it. We also developed design guidelines as the fourth element for new commercial districts. This is where the idea comes into play, where you have this concepts of development that have been identified as creating a kind of character for the town of Tiverton, of particular character and quality, which would include things like the buildings, the signs, the facades, the site development, all associated with these design guidelines. We're also looking at design guidelines, and we presented those for the public right-of-way. What happens within the streets? Now, it's not just the development on the private property, it's also a relationship to what happens within the roadway as well, too, with the roadways, the sidewalks, the landscaping, the curb lines, all those different ways of passage through, that links in and makes the development possible. So there's a relationship between the public right-of-way and what can be developed in there, and there are design guidelines associated with that. And there are design guidelines associated with the development of the private property adjacent to that and how that plays through. So what I want to do is step over here, just pull up a couple of maps to show what the areas are talking about. And so I'll stay with the mic. This map here is of Main Road, and it shows the new boundary districts, new bounds of the zoning districts, and the three sub-districts being traditional Main Street, which I think you might recognize in the north part of Main Road, that has the older-looking character of development with the buildings adjacent to each other and fronting on the street in a typical kind of Main Street. The next district is the yellow areas that we're calling neighborhood business. In these particular districts, the character of development is such that we're looking at a lot of residential buildings in there, but some of them have been converted to commercial uses. And what we're trying to do there is maintain that low-scale development, neighborhood kind of condition that exists along there, but still providing the opportunity for commercial uses. The red areas in here are what we call the pedestrian-friendly district. That's our third sub-district. And that particular sub-district is for recognizing that we are still an auto-oriented culture. We have to have commercial development of a certain kind within a community as Tiverton if we're going to maintain the kind of character, the residential, traditional character and potentially rural suburban type of character of development depending on the neighborhood we're in. With the idea that the pedestrian-friendly allows more substantial commercial development, but still provides, with the design guidelines, the comfort, increasing the comfort level for the pedestrians that will move within and along, within the development and along Main Road to access those uses. And one of the things that we're impressed with is the improvement of Main Road and the sidewalks that the state put in, the kind of, the number of people that you see walking down the street is fairly substantial and is a significant part of the plan. I'll show you also the Bliss Four Corners, in this case, completely set aside as pedestrian-friendly district. And again, the boundaries, lines of the zoning district being different than previously laid out for the idea of trying to maintain that consistency across properties to prepare those development districts. In the regulations themselves, there are a number of diagrams, and I'm going to hold these up from the distance you are, you won't be able to see these. But these are, see the dimensions on them, but what these are showing are ways to illustrate the dimensional standards and requirements of what are existing general commercial. And here is just the example where there is a minimum front yard set pack of zero, meaning you can put a building up to the line, but you don't have to in this case. There's a certain lot size associated with a 12,000, there's some side yards and rear yard set packs on the property. But this particular designation of the regulations, we've translated into something that suggests what we're looking for for the development along these different sub-districts. So in the traditional Main Street district, we're looking at a maximum front yard set pack. So we're making buildings come up to the front yard, to the front yard set pack, right behind the sidewalk line. So it maintains that traditional character. We're putting the parking in the rear and providing the opportunity to make the links between those properties so that there can be other connections for circulation to try to make the greater efficiency in the rear of the properties. And indicating in terms of the buildings, what the height limits are and what the opportunity is there. One of the things we looked at in these were the idea of whether or not by change in dimensional requirements, we are making more or less non-conformities. What we don't want to do with the zone change is create a higher level of non-conformity with the properties. So our dimensional sizes will change a little bit as a result of what we saw actually from the GIS system and looking at the different sized properties and dimensions of those within the different areas. This is the neighborhood business concept. And here, what we're looking for is to try to maintain that kind of character and quality of a residential neighborhood, even though there could be commercial uses of the buildings. So within the front yard set pack, we're not allowing parking. Parking goes on the side or the rear of the building. There's a more substantial front yard set pack, but it allows the idea of porches or other links and connections up in the front yard, maintain that. For the pedestrian-friendly district, we're looking at the larger size development potential within this district, a higher level of commercial development with the more typical kind of parking associated with in the front, side, and rear of the property. But as the parking gets in towards the front of this development, what we're looking at is to create ways to improve the pedestrian, to make it comfortable for the pedestrian to walk along, not only along the street, but go into the property and into the buildings that come, that would be built within this, within these dimensional, within these dimensional standards. A couple of things that I wanted to point out on the design guidelines, there are, within the draft that we prepared, a number of both illustrations of what should be done for development as well as what should not be done, or something, things to avoid in terms of the development details, such as the idea of entries and doors and awnings and lighting and landscaping and window openings, and if there is outdoor seating, landscaping and the way signage is installed on the buildings. For the design guidelines regarding the street layouts and the concepts within the public right-of-way, we have three elements of standards plus some additional street design standards that come along with the proposal within what we've submitted to the town at this time. The three different concepts are a Main Street with parking on the street, and in this case, because of the width of the right-of-way in the north end of Main Road, we're looking at only parking on one side of the street with the other parking in the rear of the properties. We're looking where, within the pedestrian-friendly district, the idea of having medians to allow pedestrians to cross the street safely, but also having three lanes with a center turning lane, a two-way left turn lane within the design regulations or design guidelines that we have proposed. One of the things I want to point out in the concepts that have been brought forward in the plan was that at the time, we were initially planning Bliss Four Corners and looking at the commercial zoning in that area, the state DOT, right out, had come forward with a concept plan for a roundabout at the intersection. And so we presented some design guidelines for the roundabout and how that could have been applied as well to that situation, as well as any other that comes along, if it should a roundabout be appropriate in some other location within the community. Couple of details that I'd like to add in this is that we've looked at the use table and the sizes of commercial development within the general commercial district. I know that there's other commercial projects, the Tiverton Crossing, Carpinales Project that is in process right now. But one of the elements of the, within the development, of the size of development within the retail business, the use table, in terms of whether or not it's permitted or by special use exception or not permitted, was the sizes of 15,000 square feet for gross leasable floor area to 40,000 square feet and whatever else was over 40,000 square feet as the dimensional size. So we're not talking about large buildings, we're talking about moderate to smaller size construction within these zoning districts that we've proposed here. I am pleased with where this is right now. This is not the classic form-based code that comes along with a greenfield that you might think of in terms of the planning process associated with saying, "We're going to start all new and give ourselves an opportunity to design whatever we want to." What we're doing is actually what we call hybrid form-based code. We're working within the existing development, the existing concepts of development that have taken place and what people are interested in the community becoming. And understanding that you have a zoning regulation in place, and what we're trying to do is modify and amend that to make this the most sense for a form-based code. There are probably questions regarding the content. We've submitted a plan. I'd be happy to answer any other questions or if you want to provide any other input in the...
No, I just think that we open it up to the council for questions. I'm sure there are many, on any further discussion or breakdown of the different areas that we dealt with.
Well, we are having the Town Council open hearing on this at some point, and maybe that would be the more appropriate time for the Town Council to have questions, only because we don't have another...
No, we do. I'm not trying to...
We have three more members.
I would just encourage you, if you do have questions now, to ask them. That's the idea of the workshop. Before it gets finalized, before you publish it out to the public and everybody comes in, now's, this is primarily for your benefit, for the council's benefit, so that you, the public, their benefit, but they've been to very, or have had the opportunity to go to various planning board meetings as well. This is really for the Town Council's benefit so that you can get more comfortable and understanding with it. You may not like it, you may want to vote against it, but at least any questions you have, or even if you have problems with it now, now really would be a good time to raise it.
Okay.
You know, Ken, maybe what you might be able to do is to take out the map again and bring it forward for the council and just talk about where the breaks are in the different portions of the Main Road section. So where the traditional Main Street is to the pedestrian-friendly and...
Sure. That's also a main system. I'm going to turn this back to the audience here, but the general commercial district runs down State Avenue and down Main Road all the way to Sousa Road in this particular piece that we are looking at. And what we've done is, for the district along Main Road and up to Cananicas, was to have this as the traditional Main Street. This is the only area where it has the kind of character of development and the kind of opportunity, we think, you know, to, and really it's the very northern end of it. And some of this would be filling in down to Cananicas as part of what would happen in a traditional Main Street kind of development, with this idea of pushing it up. You can't have that go all the way down Main Road. You can only have it go and so, there can only be so much of it to keep it interesting and keep it viable for the size community we're talking about. So we ended it here at Cananicas. The neighborhood business district, we came down here to about Judson Street and recognized that almost everything on the east side, going all the way down to High Ridge Terrace, is separated, either not commercial, institutional, church, or school, or residential that didn't have, doesn't have any connection or link because of grade changes to Main Road. So we, but we have some other properties on the western side of Main Road that do have that access and do have that connection. And so we continued this neighborhood business down to Russell Drive. And at this point, what we have in terms of the kind of development, and here we have the drugstores and the food store, yeah, a number of different kind of commercial projects that you think of as a kind of suburban mall kind of development. And what are the opportunities here to try to improve this and to make this more of a center, a commercial center, because of the depth of the properties and the amount of area available to the development within those districts. And we ended it down at Pecassid Avenue with the idea that this additional section would be put in as neighborhood business again, a lower-scale kind of development, until we got down to the... we got down to the very end with the redoing this idea of the pedestrian-friendly district. Now, a couple of things about this. I said we had extended the property boundaries to the rear of all the properties. We did not do that for the lumberyard because, and we didn't do that for the property down on Sousa, at the corner of Sousa Road either. The idea being that what we're looking at here is if there is some development that makes sense for the community and makes sense for a development process as well, too, that this could be rezoned, there could be another process of going through for the rezoning for the purpose of developing these properties. But it didn't make sense without a development plan in place to start changing zoning or development concept in place, to start changing the zoning here because of the significance of the size of these properties and what they mean. Most of the properties we're talking about are a few acres in size. These are on the order of getting closer to 10 acres in size and more significant in terms of the development potential. And not really fitting with the kind of commercial development that we saw elsewhere under this zoning district that took place. So that was Main Road.
Ken, just while you're on Main Road, the bit on is that State Avenue that goes down, and I can't see that far. How far does that go? Does that go, that doesn't go quite to Clement, does it?
This is called Shove Street here.
Shove, yeah.
And it comes down to the corner of Shove, because that's where the general commercial district extends right now.
Say that again?
The general commercial district goes down Shove Street right now. It actually takes a, I mean, not Shove Street, but down State Avenue.
Yeah, but where does it end, I'm asking?
And it ends at Shove Street.
Those two streets don't connect. It's a paper road.
They almost connect. The stairway connects...
Right. Oh, so that's where it ends, is just sort of the end? Okay.
Yep. But the development goes pretty much all the way down to Shove Street. It's just the street itself doesn't connect.
Right. Okay, I'm trying to imagine. And that's the neighborhood business?
That's the neighborhood business, and it's a lower-scale kind of development, with the idea that you have other residential, other residential within the blocks.
There is residential in that.
Yes, there is. There is a mix.
I'm trying to ima, it's a pub and...
And there's an auto...
Used to be the lawn, North Tiverton Lawn or whatever.
Yeah, some kind of mechanics.
Okay.
Yeah, there's the pump station. North Tiverton Fire District has their pump station there, the main pump station.
I guess I haven't been down there.
I don't know where the crematorium is, to be honest with you.
That's on a side street, though.
Ken, while you're, I'm sorry. Well, Ken, while you're still on the road, Main Road District, and I want to take Mr. Tietz's advice that this may be an opportunity for questions or comments, my, it's really a comment, and that is, we, as you mentioned earlier, we're not taking a blank piece of property here. I think that what we have to do with this district, and that's what I'm looking for in the language of this proposal, and that is that we try to be as realistic as possible. When you refer, for example, to the northernmost section as the neighborhood business section, I think that's probably a euphemism for something else, but it, you know, it is what it is, and this whole area is what it is. I think the language that you have in here, at least the language as I understand it, seems to realistically accept what we have, what our view is for the future, and what we can do to redevelop this area over some period of time. And I think that's about all we can say about this. Just this past week, I've had a couple of people contact me about a store that's going up across the street from Humphrey. I don't know if you're familiar with this. They're under construction, and it's going to be a general dollar store. That's what it's going to be. There's no sign up, but it's going, I'm told it's going to be a general dollar store. Now, I guess if I had a blank palette and I could put anything I want in these properties and force people to come to Tiverton, I might have a biotech building. But I've been arguing, that's great. A dollar store is totally appropriate for the development that we have there right now, especially so if you can do something with the bank that's next door. You may not be familiar with this, but I think the people in the audience are. I think we have to accept with this plan the realities of what we have and what we can realistically do. And having pipe dreams is not going to help this situation or help the situation at Bliss Four Corners. I think for that purpose, this is the plan for developing, helping to develop Tiverton.
One of the things...
So I don't know, I just wanted to follow up, Andy, at least give my observation of going through this.
That's what we're here for, people, you know, talk freely, give your comments, who like it, not like it, if there's something in particular you like or don't like or...
If I didn't like it, I tell you, Ken, I tell you, I didn't like it. But I think this is totally realistic. It's a common sense approach to these neighborhoods, I think.
You're speaking in favor of it.
Yeah, I think overall it looks realistic.
Because I'm confused.
No, no, I am speaking in favor. What I'm saying is, look, if I had a blank palette and if I could put in anything that I wanted to, and I could force people to come to Tiverton and put in what I want, would I necessarily have a neighborhood that looks like this? Well, probably not. But I think we're going to have to accept the reality of what we have. And it's going to be a slow-evolving process to get the type of neighborhoods, the type and the type of commercial development that we want.
Right.
So in that sense, this is a perfectly good plan, I think, for Tiverton, but somebody can convince me, I guess, otherwise, but I think it's appropriate to our situation.
And this is where the use tables are so important to what you want, you know, and they will conform to the type that Ken is presenting as shown in the table on the next page. I'm sorry.
One of the concepts with zoning is, you can't develop the land yourself just because of the zoning in place. The property owner and a developer has to invest in the banks and make that happen. And, but what you're doing is you're providing an opportunity with the zoning in place. And not just an opportunity for anything to come through, but a particular style of development and type of development that you want to see as well, too, within the market potential that's there. And that's the long-term change, that as the investment starts to occur, that'll be an incremental change and improvement over time that makes the difference. And that's what we have to have in the long-term view.
This may be my final thought on the subject. Another concern that I have is that with any plan that you're putting together, in order to encourage people to come in to Tiverton, to come into these neighborhoods, I think you have to have a plan in place that convinces them that they are protected, that they know, if they're the pilgrim, if they're the first ones to begin the development, if they move in next year or the year after that, they have some understanding of what can develop around them and what the vision is that we have in town. And I think for people that are investing big bucks, I think that becomes necessary.
Absolutely. You're reducing the risk to a developer, and that's important. And if your zoning regulations are confusing, if it's difficult to get through, there's going to be less of a, there's going to be higher risk and less interest in making the project happen within your town. By being clear with your vision and your regulations, you increase your opportunity for the good kind of development you want to see.
Oh, I'll ask some questions. The new rearrangement or edits to the use table that's contemplated in this report, are there any, have there been any new additions to the use table? Any subtractions, or are we just moving around within the framework of what we already have?
There were some changes, and we took out at least one line that was not defined, which is under the residential uses, E household, as a use, because that's covered elsewhere within the regulations. We clarified some of the uses, other uses that are in here by referencing state law to the general laws as to where these things are defined, in particular for schools and universities. And we added in, clarified some of the uses by adding in terms such as for drive-through service, to make sure that it was clear what uses were being controlled under Section 7. We, as I said before, we added the dimensions for different sizes of commercial development rather than the general descriptions and confusing definitions, actually, of different uses within the retail business, Section 10. It had things like, started listing out different store types to try to explain the differences, and it wasn't really clear what those differences were by listing out pharmacy, hardware store, furniture store versus specialty retail business. So we did it by dimensional sizes in there, added in a retail shopping center as one of the listed uses in there, and then added at the end some clarifications as the standards for detrimentality or impairment. And this is something that the building inspector was looking for, to understand what would be the determination of something that would be detrimental or an impairment as to distinguish for non-conformities.
So the question, so excellent. You mentioned, you know, the trick about whether or not, when you either rezone or create a new overlay or a new piece of zoning, whether you create more non-conformities than you eliminate. Now, we haven't done that, have we? Created more non-conformities or potential for more non-conformities? I mean, obviously, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yes.
Trying to go the opposite way.
And tip, in doing this, we, there may be some use that I'm not familiar with in there that doesn't fit with the use table, but I think we're pretty well-covered on the uses. What, the key piece that we were concerned about were the dimensional standards, the minimum lot size and the setbacks for buildings. And with those, we did take a look at trying to improve the number of conformities in there and not to ask for a two-acre lot size when all the lots in the area are a quarter acre, half acre, as a way to, you know, we may not be perfect in that, but we certainly didn't want to, we looked at that as dimensional standards to make sure that there was conformity in the dimensional standards.
Great. I think the only thing I'll say is, you know, I think this is a good document, and I think that it, more than being a radical instrument of change, is sort of a passive guidance book or something that gives potential developers or property owners more of a roadmap as to where the town is looking to go in these two geographical areas. And I think that's important because sometimes something as simple as suggestions and pictures do really help a considerable amount. It doesn't necessarily cost anymore to put the building 20 feet this way or 20 feet that way, but it could make a difference in the streetscape, it could make a difference in the neighborhood and how pedestrians flow through the space and how vehicular traffic flows through the space. And I think having something that's as well-thought-out as, well, anything that's well-thought-out as a whole is better than the sort of patchwork, for lack of a better term, which is what often happens in large geographies that don't have consistent zoning throughout hundreds of years. I mean, it doesn't happen, you know, it's New England, you built something in 1850 and it's still there. And so you have to work around with what physical structures exist and what geographic, you know, impairments exist. So that's all I have to say. I mean, I went to a couple of the workshops and I thought they were very helpful, and I have no real issues or questions or concerns. So thanks, Ken.
You're welcome. You reminded me of another issue that although we have design guidelines for the public right-of-ways, these are state roads for the most part, so that you have more limited control as to what can actually be constructed within those areas. However, one of the interesting things about these, the road standards and the guidelines we've prepared for you, is other than the specific locations, we make recommendations for different medians and parking and whatever else, there are, within here, standards that you could apply anywhere within the town. Things about what's appropriate for pedestrian access, what's the right, what's the right kind of crosswalk and ramp system for ADA accessibility, some of the dimensional standards that make sense for, and design standards that make sense for safe travel. And those you can apply, not only here in these locations, but elsewhere within the town.
I think it also, that sort of made me think of, it's also not strictly, I think, a municipal planning document, in so much as it is also a resource for commercial business owners and tenants and, you know, potential investors, owners, developers, et cetera. There's a lot of really good technical information that isn't intuitive necessarily, that isn't come to mind automatically. It's a real well-thought-out, you know, we know that, you know, this type of facade does X, Y, and Z, and this type of facade doesn't. And you can't get people into your, you know, it's got a real good technical level about it that I think is helpful to a lot of people who would be, you know, would be developers, would be business owners, would be tenants.
There's even a reading list in the back...
Yes.
To get more information beyond even what's shown here.
Yeah. I mean, goes to, I mean, for anyone who hasn't, in the honest, hasn't seen it, it talks about lighting and signage and awning placement and where your building opening, you know, your windows and doors and how they relate to pedestrian flow and how they relate to the accessibility of, you know, we go so far as to, you know, folks who have eyesight or physical, you know, limitations, where people in with canes and walkers and all sorts of things. I mean, it's really just, like I said, it's not intuitive. It's not stuff that just comes to mind when you're walking down the street. It's a really well-thought analysis of how people move about in spaces. But, there are a lot of colors and pictures and charts and things, so...
One of the things that might be of interest is the, within the pedestrian-friendly district, the more intense commercial district, often what you see in suburban strip malls is the one-story flat roof that doesn't have any real character to it in terms of what it looks like. And within these regulations, and you may or may not agree, what we've... And within these regulations, and you may or may not agree, what we've said is if you're going to have a short building, you can see the rooftop on it, that it's got to be a steeply pitched roof, it's got to have some roof pitch. As you go up, if you go up to the maximum height, 35 feet, which is about a three-story building, residential building, you can have the flatter roof on that building because that doesn't have the same kind of visual effect. The building massing is creating something quite different, that the roof pitch, the pitched roof provides in the shorter squatter buildings so that there's a, this kind of quality of development comes through and a fairly simple dimensional standard that takes place if you want, if you wish to adopt this.
I just have a couple of questions, I guess. I noticed that in front of the cemetery, you have that as a pedestrian-friendly district.
Could you relate to, you're looking at a page, I believe, in the document?
It's basically that.
Page six.
On page six.
Okay. Thank you.
Right now, across the street from the cemetery are our homes, they're small, there's a couple I believe that have home-based business. It's not heavily business-oriented. And that's really what you want to see across from the cemetery. Cemetery is long and you basically, if you're at the top of the cemetery, you're looking down and you don't really like see the bank or the Humphreys, there's screening on that side, there's homes on one side, it's kind of quiet. Now, with it being a pedestrian-friendly district, this would allow more business there, heavily developed business across the street from the cemetery. And that to me is giving more activity, more commercial feel rather than a friendly feel with a home-type feeling to it. And I think that's important next to the cemetery. You know, you can screen on the sides, but when you're at the cemetery and you're looking down, you're looking down towards the water, it's very peaceful. And I think it, by being designated as a pedestrian-friendly district, I think that'll take away from that quietness for that particular area, particularly since the bottom part of the cemetery is the cremation area. And that will have more of a congestion of burials and we want to make that particular area more of a peaceful area. So I think this is in conflict with what the cemetery commission would be in agreement with.
Couple of things. One is I want to point out, we don't rezone the cemetery itself in this plan.
I understand that.
And that's not a commercial use. The properties across the street, a bunch of them are residential and residential nature. They're already zoned general commercial at this point. And they could redevelop with other commercial uses that don't really fit that kind of character either. What we saw was that these were small properties and so the potential redevelopment that takes place is not significant in size for the individual properties that take place there. If they were aggregated together, if somebody came in and bought up all the properties and they could have something more substantial, but that could occur at this point as well too.
Correct.
But your point is exactly with the kind of discussion that we needed and wanted and had with the process to say, where are these boundaries? Where do people see a cutoff in terms of the character? And not based just on what's existing there, but what they'd like to see as well too. We made our best shot at those, at the boundaries that took place here. You could modify these lines as you wanted to.
I was wondering why it wasn't like a neighborhood business area, because that's really what it is right now.
Essentially because of the large.
I know you have the Rite Aid.
The Rite Aid, because of the Rite Aid. That was the reason why we linked the Rite Aid together with the other commercial development on the other side of the street and further up. Other than that, these parcels in here, you're right, I mean, they don't necessarily fit the character. But it doesn't necessarily mean they'll change either.
They could.
They could, but it doesn't necessarily mean they will because they've had the general commercial zoning in place at this, for this time already, which is a little bit more liberal in terms of the opportunities that you have in the redevelopment.
And we've experienced that with one of those properties that went from strictly a residential dwelling to what is now a medical office, isn't, is too intensive a term, but a, I don't know, an office building essentially, it is predominantly an office building directly across the street from the bank.
Then in that case, what we could do and what you should probably want to do is to look specifically at that use. Was the building torn down and redeveloped?
No, no.
Well, then what you want to do is look at that use and see if it fits within the, what we've prepared as, in terms of the use table and the dimensional standards for this. Could they have otherwise, under these regulations, done that? If they could, and you don't particularly like it, why don't you like it? And then we can look at the regulations in that regard. Or if it was, if it doesn't meet the regulations, do these regulations get, take away some of those issues involved in that? And in terms, as I said, in terms of the boundary, that could change as you want.
And I think, oh, sorry. I think that generally speaking, as a whole, we don't do a lot of demolishing and building new in areas like that, I think. And I think that's probably, just in general, we don't, in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, et cetera, we don't build, we don't tear down a lot of things to build new things when the existing things are in good shape. And I think there are market forces that prevent that from happening and have at least prevented someone from coming in, and I don't know how long we've had that as general commercial, it's been quite a while though, from tearing down one, two, three or four houses to put up what would essentially be a strip mall because the depth is not conducive to a large-scale development. So, I don't know how you resolve that, but I don't think you can jigsaw a puzzle it either.
No, unless you own the property, you can't, you don't control it completely. You control it with, under the zoning and land use regulations you have available to you under the strictures, the dimensions allowed by state law says what you can accomplish.
So, I mean, I think, and I think probably what we would see in that instance in the future would be a similar, a repeat of a single-family house that changes hands, it isn't a general commercial area, it's in this new, I'm sorry, what it's, whatever it's called, I'm sorry, the pedestrian-friendly development overlay district. You would have more, I think, market pressure to sort of rehabilitate the structure and reuse it as something else rather than demolishing it and building something which would be out of, I mean, it'd be right next door to two single-family houses.
Are you talking about that little block there?
Yeah, so, yeah.
As an example of residential?
Yeah.
Because if, I mean, you're, I think if this were to manifest as, we're talking about some level of demolishing and rebuilding, in particular, you know, at least those buildings that are commercial, you know what I mean? Like, I don't think this is, we're going to have to demolish and rebuild on some scale.
I mean, I think.
For the full vision of this to kind of manifest over time.
Well, I think that's, I think, when I, I would say that the market only has so much appetite for speculative demolishing and building or for a single user to do that. So it would certainly be a very paced, like, I mean, if we go by the history and that's all we have to go by, the amount of residential homes in the last 30 years that have been converted to commercial uses in a commercial district, I think that's probably the pace at which we could expect the remainder of them to be converted, just by, you know, a cursory glance.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily talking about changing residential, you know, like a house turning.
No, they are, there are, there are single-family homes in these districts.
Oh, absolutely.
And this one is one that Joan pointed out specifically, because it's at the foot of the Cassett Cemetery and so.
In that case, I would go back to the original thought, which was maybe this should not be the more intensive district, maybe this should be the neighborhood business district, which is exactly that. Expectation is that the existing residential development will be converted, that there'll be commercial uses made of these residential buildings. But what you want to have remain is that residential nature of the look and feel of the street, which would be the basis of saying you want the kind of setbacks and.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to ignore the Rite Aid property and it's, you know, and the lot next door, which is a commercial retail parcel, which, I don't know what the, is it Grandview, the end of, between Grandview and whatever the street is, the new, what is it? Ford Farm Lane or Ford Farm Road in Grandview, there's a parcel there that is zoned for commercial use. It's a fairly substantial parcel that one could, without straining one's eyesight, imagine being another retail structure or a commercial office building or something in future. Because it's one of the few cleaner development sites without a building on it and without a whole lot of, you know, you know about.
Topography.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, that's a logical bookend, but I don't know what you do about those single-family.
The proposed proposals, the neighborhood business and the pedestrian-friendly, the building height actually is lowered from what is allowed right now. Right now, it's allowed at 50 feet and then both of those different proposals, it comes down to 35. So what could be built there under either section in the future would be less than what could be built there now.
How long is, how long has this been general commercial, this main road?
Been general commercial for Rosemary?
Many, many years.
A long time.
It was 300 feet from the center of the road down to.
I'm trying to do a scan in my head, there's not a 50-foot building in the town of Tipton.
So what?
No, I'm just saying, I'm, yeah, there could be, certainly, I'm just saying, but the.
And you can't stop it, see, this is what he's trying to explain to you. It is commercial, they can do it now. This is attempting to soften it and give a more pleasant view. If it's not what you like, then you may want, as Mr. Buckland has explained, change it down to perhaps a neighborhood-type business and make it even a more gentle area.
What's the design, the design guidelines that go along with the new proposals?
What's there now has greater potential.
I love your language, David. That's what this is, it's a soft transition. That's what I think you're trying to accomplish here, at least as I read it.
Because there's nothing radical here about what they present.
No, that's my point, and I think the language is perfect.
They're trying to make this.
Put the word "soft transition," that's what we're talking about.
But you're opening it up for the property lines now, whereas you had a set area before.
The area can change.
I mean, you're allowing more expansion.
Most likely those homes will be, stay as homes, that size, and be converted into businesses, like you see on East Main Road in Portsmouth. That area has changed, they used to be all residential, now it's commercial, small individual owners doing a business, you know, their home starts building.
I think that's a rash assumption, to think that because you have that home there now that it would be converted to some type of business with that building. If I were a builder, the easiest thing for me to do is bring in the bulldozer and while you're out to lunch, it's gone. And you start afresh and it's much easier for them. Now, if that's not what you want, then you need to cover that now. But it's a lot easier for them to start from scratch, unless you already own it and you're the one converting it and you don't have the finances to do that.
I want to point out that you can't say that somebody has to have a building of a certain type on their property. What you do under the zoning is say, here's the framework within which you can build and you can tear down and rebuild and as part of that process. So unless you have an historic district that has some very strong language and demolition delay kind of bylaws, you're not, you can't say somebody can't come in and demolish and start rebuilding.
I know I'm late to the discussion and I apologize, so if this was already covered, please stop me and I'll figure it out offline. But I think this all is a fantastic piece of work and want to thank the folks who are involved. I think it helps lay out a vision for these two areas that, you know, for me personally are exciting. Assuming everything were to move forward and these, you know, form-based codes were adopted and all of that sort of thing, I mean, in all likelihood, we're talking about, it could be a generation before all of this were to be redeveloped in a way that, you know, we're talking a very long-term plan here.
You're absolutely right. It's kind of interesting where you have, you know, back in the, you know, I look, I go through a lot of different plans in different communities and back in the 60s, you know, look at the plans then and everybody figured because the growth of the population was going up, you know, astronomically, that everything was going to be built out by 1980, you know, it's all going to be done. You know, now people are more circumspect about things like that because the population growth isn't there, the market growth isn't there, and so the opportunities are quite different. That's what we have right now. We can't crystal ball what's going to happen in the long-term future, but yeah, right now, what we're looking at is more than likely, if we're still, if we're looking at just the more recent trends, there were, it's a very long-term plan to see the full length of change within this district because there's so much commercial, land-zoned commercial here in this, in this town as it is.
So I guess my question is, you know, and perhaps I got off on the wrong foot where I interjected in the residential thing because I'm not saying we should bulldoze houses at all, but there are portions here, believe me, that's the last thing I want to have happen. But there are buildings here, like, let's use for example, like, the good folks at Stafford Building Supplier doing a nice rehab on the old Brooks Building there, right? But eventually, if that is to come to be in this vision, I mean, some of these buildings are going to have to get leveled, right, and rebuilt.
There's a life, lifespan to buildings and depending on the use you want to make of it, even whatever building it might be may not fit that particular demand for the, for the use.
But there is some level of rebuilding here that at some point in time would need to come to fruition, you know, come to bear.
There'll be change.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's part of what you're hoping for, that there'll be this kind of investment, that there'll be, whatever change that might be, significant or minor, that there'll be change over time and reinvestment in properties within these commercial areas.
Now, the properties are one thing, the street, and I forget the term that was used, but, you know, when we get into, you know, I like the term that was used in here, living streets. But the work to kind of enhance at least the roadways or the streetways could be a more shorter-to-midterm type project or kind of phase in this long-term vision, correct?
It all depends on how it's funded, of course.
Sure, how it's funded, the states involved, so on and so forth.
But you have.
That could be a more immediate.
You have more control over the, over the public right-of-way than you do over the private land.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, the Bliss Four Corners, that's in a watershed area.
Yes.
So does that affect, has the conservation committee said anything whether this would affect the watershed area? Has it have, has that been in any discussion?
Yes, it has, and the, the discussion has been that there are, there are overlays of, of watershed protection regulations, they're going to apply no matter what land use regulations are, are developed. But what we're doing is, we're providing the opportunity, with that restriction in, in place, to, to redevelop these properties with the, with the same opportunity that you see elsewhere, when, when, in the zoning regulations. But we, we don't get rid of any environmental restrictions, they all stay in place, and all those protections still apply.
And I just want, had we cut back on the commercial districts, a little bit on that pond side, up in the, in the northwest corner, the far northwest corner, the top part of that district was cut back to keep it a little farther away from the pond. And then the areas where it was extended a little bit are on the opposite side of, of Stafford Road.
These, these properties here, the, the thought, the thought was on these, these properties on the, on the eastern side of Stafford Road, is that there's enough, enough depth there that actually there could be another, another accessway that connects to the properties, and actually allows some other development to occur, a subdivision of the land essentially within that commercial development.
Do you have any idea how much of an increase it is?
Pretty much, it's on the other.
Yes.
Yeah, I did, the calculation between the difference in the general commercial and the, the new district at Bliss, it's an increase of 1.3 acres altogether, for a net, net increase.
One of the things we did was.
Approximately.
We, we took away some of the zoning that extended in the southern, southwestern portion, brought that back.
And what's the increase on the, the new district called the GC?
I, I calculated it out by section. From the traditional Main Street District, it was an increase of one acre. For the Neighborhood Business District, that little spur down State Avenue from Show Street was a decrease of .3 acres. Canaanicus Street to Claire Avenue, Russell Drive was an increase of 1.2 acres. Grandview Avenue to Rocky Avenue, that was a decrease of .7 acres. In the pedestrian-friendly district, from Russell Drive to Grandview Avenue, it was a decrease of 4.6 acres. And from Rocky Avenue to Souza Road, it was a decrease of 8.4 acres. And then, where he said Bliss Corners, was an increase of 1.3 acres. And those are all approximate, I mean, it's not. The number of parcels total on Main Road, the number of properties included in the district went from 229 to 145, and at Bliss Corners, it went from 43 to 32. But those lots are all now, no longer split, so that's the main difference.
The zoning follows the property lines, where before they were split, because it only went 300 feet back, and it separated the properties, now it goes to the property line, so it's.
That's on the GC, right, on the Main Road part?
It's on all of them.
On all of them.
Yep, except for, like Mr. Buckland explained, and at the lumberyard and at the vacant parcel on the corner of Souza Road, those big parcels, it doesn't extend to the property line at this time.
So what is the zoning of the back half of Humphreys?
It's our, our 30 or our 60, I can't remember off the top of my head. 30, 30. Residential.
So Kate, and my question was, those two properties, PD Humphreys just explained that to me, it's going to be residential, it's presidential.
It is.
Yeah, but the corner of Souza and Main Road, which is Starwood's property, it's going to still remain general commercial, that was where they're.
That's how I understand it, that it would remain general commercial, except for the, the front part, and then if a development project, project came in, then.
They have to go by the general commercial restrictions and regulations.
Right, or they could come in for a map change, or.
Yeah. Then the first step would be, look at it as a general commercial.
Mm-hmm. That's how, that's how it would be set up now.
Has this been reviewed with wastewater management?
I, we did not send it to wastewater management.
I mean, I know, I've spoken with Mr. Lenkort about it, and I'm, I'm not sure, they haven't weighed in specifically, no.
Okay, because I'm just, yeah, I don't know the, the water line, how far does it go on Main Road?
It runs the entire length, I believe, the water line. The sewer line runs about three buildings in on Main Road. The rest of it is not sewered.
Right, and then we also have stormwater considerations. Where you have the pedestrian-friendly district by Humphreys, that's one of our concern areas with the Robert Gray area, with pollution getting into the bay. So, the more impervious surface you have, the more chance you have of more rainwater, which is stormwater. So, has this been reviewed with the DPW Director?
The, the DPW Director has been included in the discussions, he hasn't had any specific comments. He did review specifically the, the transportation sections, those went to DPW Police and Fire for specific comments, but he has not weighed in specifically on the other parts of it.
One of the things you.
I'd like to see his, his review of this on, for stormwater management.
One of the things that, of course, you talk about impervious coverage, we do change the lot coverage maximums under the Neighborhood Business District, down from 50% lot coverage to 25%. In the traditional Main Street District, we increase it from 50% to 80%. And in the pedestrian-friendly district, it remains the same as it is in the general commercial, has 50% coverage, except in unusual circumstances.
May I add, add this to, any development here is going to be in compliance with the D E M for rainwater, stormwater. So, they look in first, and they're going to be engineered and reviewed before they do any changes, so. There's like a, an umbrella protection there. So, that concern about stormwater has already been thought about locally and statewide. They've got to go through a lot of engineering before they do a lot of changes, and this extra runoff, they have to make means to take care of that water for like in-ground retention and stuff like that.
Right, and, and that's stormwater, and then the, from a sewer perspective, I think the, the Sewer Commission, Wastewater Management Commission, stayed away from Main Road in their plans because it was just resurfaced. So, they basically made a conscious decision to not disrupt the Main Road area because of all the, the money that went into building the road, and if you put in sewer, you're just going to dig it up again, it's going to be a cost.
Well, that's again, a state road, and there's restrictions, you can't go, go back and dig it up after they paved it. So, you, they can't, you got to hold off as well, till you get a waiver, or you get the, the time passes. So, it's not going to be a quick development, it's not going to be, you know, a rush for development and changes, you've got to meet these requirements.
If I can just add one thing, too. In our current ordinances, in the general commercial district, we don't regulate lot coverage, we only regulate building coverage. So, a person can come in today and pave 100% of their lot, and we don't have anything to say about it. Now, with the new form-based code that we're looking at, we are looking at that lot coverage and having at least some kind of controls over the lot coverage. So, the intention is to improve the situation, and to get a better, kind of a better idea of, of what the impervious coverage is going to be, rather than just having no restrictions on it at all. That's the intent, at least.
Did we, does this, this plan contemplate any alterations to the requirements for parking for these, say, pedestrian-friendly districts, or, or any of the districts, I should say?
Not in the number of parking spaces required, only in the, the design of the parking lots.
Okay.
Anybody else on the council have any questions or comments?
Just one additional comment or question, kind of picking up on what Joan was saying. From a, well, Joan's question was kind of more on the wastewater kind of sewage end of things, but from a, just a water infrastructure kind of perspective, is there any concerns that what might be under the ground now might not be sufficient over the long term to accommodate, you know, this build-out, and would we have to make investments?
Under the ground, meaning the, the sewers in, in Main Road?
And the water.
Capacity?
Well, I'm thinking about those in the North Tiverton Fire District, that end-of-town, people on Main Road who are getting their water. I mean, I don't know if we increase, you know, development here, and, you know, we have, you know, 50% more kind of food service-type places, and we're using more water, is there any concerns from an infrastructure perspective there?
The Fire District does have their new water tower on Hambly, I believe, North Tiverton Fire District has a new water tower. So, they do have more capacity, because they did have capacity issues in the past.
Okay.
And, you know, coincidentally enough, one of the new requirements for the state for our comp plan update is that we need to coordinate with the Water Department and look at the build-out and the capacity of the water system, which is not something we've ever done before, or at least that I'm aware of. So, in the fut, in the, this next update, there will need to be considerable collaboration with the Fire, both Fire Districts, and looking at their capacities, and relating those to the build-out potential in the different areas of town. So, that's not really an answer, but.
Well, no, I think if we, if we're thinking, if we're giving forethought to capacity and potential capacity issues, that absolutely addresses my question.
Do we have any idea what the capacity is of our water departments?
Mr. Cor.
Sorry, I didn't see.
I sit on the Stonebridge Board.
Pete, can you talk into the microphone, please?
I'm Peter Cor, I sit on the water board, Stonebridge Water Board. We have a capacity to produce 2.1 million gallons a day. The most we've ever produced is 1.9 million gallons a day, and that's when Fall River shut off North Tiverton, and at the same time, we were giving water to Portsmouth. So, we're still 300, let's see, several hundred thousand gallons under our capacity, even at worst-case scenario. So, the, the, to outbuild what we can pump right now, of course, we're presently doing upgrades to the plant right now, so we could probably pump 2.5 million gallons a day, but we couldn't sustain that, but we can do it on, for 1.7 million gallons in the summer is, is all the town can use right now, both North Tiverton and Stonebridge.
Modeling had been done in the past by both districts.
And the, the, the town would not be funding any, any pipe work anyways, it's strictly up to the private water companies to do that.
Going to Bliss Four Corner area, was there a reason why there's no, like, Neighborhood Business Sub-District in this area?
We had, we had, in an earlier draft, put in a Neighborhood Business District in here, in the, in the central section. It was during the process that it was suggested to us that the, the whole area should be the pedestrian-friendly district, providing greater opportunity for, for development opportunities in that, in that, in that rezoning.
I'm just thinking of, if it's going up, further up Stafford, north on Stafford Road, where we have the Georgia Sign, the.
Yes.
Food and Science Shop, and.
I see what you mean. Further up Stafford was, was not in the general commercial district, so we didn't look that far afield from where the general commercial was, where it exists there now.
So, right now, they're legal non-conforming, is that?
They're, they are non-conforming, if they're commercial uses in the, in the district and haven't received any zoning relief, then they're non-conforming use, because those are residential districts.
Well, they, they were originally zoned general commercial, I believe they were changed.
Harry Barbosa's auto, pre-existing non-conforming.
I'll have to check. Because we also have the dairy.
Right, I think, right, I think the question is not so much what they were, but what do you want them to become? And I, and I guess that's, you know, you're suggesting that's a possibility, to extend, so you'd have another zone going north of the existing pedestrian-friendly zone of Neighborhood Business going north on Stafford Road, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it's, you know, if you want to connect some of the businesses there, and this pedestrian-friendly makes it very intensive there. So, I'm like, where's the transition into a neighborhood? So, I'm looking at the Neighborhood Business District as a transition into the neighborhood. So, right now, I've just got a big wad of red, and I'm looking for, well, how come there isn't some yellow to transition into this, into this area, where we do have businesses up the road, and you have that, a food pantry place at the corner.
East Bay Community.
East Bay Community.
Would that have converted residential, existing residential uses to a commercial zone? Is that why that would have, that, that wasn't formalized? Because I'm looking, you've got Tiverton Science Shop, you've got Barbosa's Radiator, you've got East Bay Community Action, the Bike Repair Shop, the rest of it is either agricultural, or, or also Gleddmas, but Gleddmas has been vacant for 20, 15 years. Most of those uses are residential, I presume, and presumably, they're all in a residential district. I see one shaking.
I think the initial charge was looking, as was explained, the initial charge was just looking at the commercial, right.
And I'm asking, if, 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 if you drew a, a box around what is essentially the end of the red district at the north end, up to what I'll call the, the old Stafford Road split, are, aside from the four that I've just listed, all of those uses residential?
Are all these residential up here?
Yes.
On, on the pond side, correct, or on?
Both sides, both sides. We're talking about both sides of.
I think it's unfair to ask Ken that, because that's not his study area.
Well, he looked at it, we looked at it at, at a meeting, we were talking about boundaries and things, I'm just wondering if.
Everything's residential, except for the dairy on the right, and then at the forks, the businesses that you mentioned.
Yeah, are clustered there.
The, the Sign Shop and, and Barbosa's.
The, the Sign Shop is over here, I think?
No, it's further up.
Actually, over the fork.
Yeah, further.
In between.
On Stafford Road.
Really?
On Stafford Road.
No, nope, forward, there you go.
Right there.
Right there. So, the bit in the corner, the bit in the triangle is East Bay Community Action, and then the Sign Shop's right behind it, and then, yeah, yeah, and then you've got Barbosa's setback.
Yeah, what we did was, we didn't, we didn't. Yeah, what we did was, we didn't, we didn't extend the, the boundaries too far beyond what is already existing zones, had the GC zoning, the General Commercial Zoning District on the property. We pulled back from resident, these were, I believe, also zoned in General Commercial. We pulled it back from there because those are residential uses and relatively new investment things, and so we left them as, as residential. But our, our boundary line, there was some discussion about the continuation, what was going on up here in terms of land uses because of the, of the, of the diversity of uses here. But, you know, our, our general charge was to try to maintain the, that, where the General Commercial is at this time. You can, I mean, Andy had pointed out that this, this is something you can start thinking about, if you're in a Neighborhood Business, you think about this idea that this is more of a, you want this to go more commercial on here. You can extend your, you can change the zoning on this district too, if your land use, if your future land use plan is so, so indicated, that that's, that's appropriate. But I would caution you in, in take, going too far afield of the existing commercial district zoning, because this goes back to that market and how long it's going to take to make changes occur anyway. I mean, we're talking about a long-term plan. The idea that if you, if you extend your commercial district along the corridor, you lose the kind of qualities of having it as a central location, a more centered location. And, and it makes more sense to have, to try to concentrate the investment rather than continue it along. So, that's all I caution, but you do have that opportunity if you wish, in your compliance or in your future land use plan, so it suggests it, so you extend commercial.
You know, the, the one thing that just sort of occurs to me is, I think, you know, you've got established residential homes, and I think there might even be one or two newly constructed residences right on that.
And, within the red?
No, well, I'm talking about beyond the, the hypothetical yellow, we'll call it. Beyond the red, that, I think that just, I mean, that starts the clock today, that doesn't start the clock 50 years ago when something was put in the ground. You know, that, the market or the, whatever the motivation to convert that to now a commercial use is even that much further down the line. You know, I mean, I, I'd be hard pressed to, you know, in the middle of residential houses, a brand-new house, I, I can't imagine somebody would come and tear it down to build a, a commercial structure, you know, today, if it was built two years ago. And so, I mean, I think that's probably...
Longer term.
Yeah. I don't know.
So, did you come to an agreement there, an answer? Anything else from the council? Planning Board? Peter?
Well, this is a big action for the town to take on, if it does go to public hearing, because it's going to involve, I think Kate told us, notifying many, many residents about the change here. So, when this hearing does take place, we should be on good solid ground in our presentation, in our good feelings, if we want to go with it, to send a positive atmosphere in the hearings, and not to go through a lot of motions and a lot of funding for notifications that are going to be in thousands of dollars, I believe. So, so we have a protective meeting in that public hearing. So, I, hopefully, we are all on board, we support it now or don't support it, so get that cleared up one way or the other, and then go for how you feel about it. It's a positive direction, let's, let's have a strong positive feeling for.
Is there anything in particular the council wants us to take a further look at?
Just what I've mentioned.
Yeah, I guess, if I could just echo that, I, I think it's got a good idea, and that's, like I said before about, this is why this is for you here. And there are six out of seven of you here now, not asking you to take a vote, but if, if you're, if you're, you know, if you're saying, no, I wouldn't vote for this without something, or I'm, I'm really opposed to it, I don't like, now is definitely the time before the town spends, how many thousand dollars on advertising, five?
Well, for postage, it'll be $6,469.45.
Right.
We have 100, 1,183 a-butter notices that we have to send out.
And then the ads, so you're probably talking about 7,500 bucks altogether for the mailing and the advertising, give or take, to do it. So if you aren't comfortable with it, speak now.
And we did already budget that with the project, by the way, so I won't be...
Right. It's already budgeted, but it's just the point, if you, if you could...
Officially vote for it after we hear from them.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, but that's why we're looking...
So, if we change our mind, someone comes to it.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? If someone comes opposed, it convinces us that that's the way it should be, so...
Yeah, but if there's really any strong negative opinions, before you get to the public hearing, you should hash it out, read it out, and settle that point.
I guess my question, a lot of the questions I heard were like, asking for particular about, have other people given input and looking to confirm and get that? Do you want that done to come back to you, to come back to the council in another workshop or at a regular meeting, just as an update, before going forward scheduling the public hearing? I mean, that's the sort of thing we're asking. Or are you saying, okay, at the public hearing, just make sure that, to have those written reports?
What does everyone think?
I mean, I think that's a logical way to go about it. We send it to boards and commissions who are concerned about making sure they're formally on notice of it, and then they can be prepared to ask any questions or make any recommendations during, during the public hearing or before.
Should we do it before the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I would recommend, I would recommend...
Yeah, because if they...
I would recommend that, that we seek the input from the boards and commissions before we send it to you. And then, that information will be part and parcel of what we recommend to you.
Before we go to public hearing.
Before, before you go to public hearing.
So that we can review it and...
Exactly.
If there's any other concerns, then we bring them out there.
So, I'm hearing Cemetery Commission and, and Wastewater.
Wastewater.
Since there's a school in the area, I think the school committee as well.
Mrs. Black was on the steering committee, so she was involved in the, in the process, but certainly within some of the technical...
In both Fire Districts.
Yep.
Yeah, on water capacity.
Do you want Mr. Palucci?
Yep, DPW.
DPW.
From a state, state, so on water management perspective.
As far as the watershed.
We're covered with conservation.
I think it would still be continued, set out to...
The conservation and see what they, let's see what they think about that.
I like when everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, before we even go into public hearing.
You've already sent it to the zoning board previously for their input, or just that they have...
Not to the zoning board.
Just because, I mean, they're going to have to be dealing with the special permits and stuff that are in it.
Typically, I mean, it's, it's been my experience that the zoning board doesn't get involved in, in these type of projects, the drafting of the regulations.
I think it's been the purview of the chairman that doesn't want to get involved in it, but maybe we have a new chairman, maybe we should.
Can you speak up, Rosemary?
Yeah. Is it permissible, Andy, to do that?
Yes, you can, you can absolutely send it to them and, you know, just ask if they have any, for their comments or recommendation. Because they, as I said, they'll, they'll have to deal with it, if it's passed, they'll have to deal with it on the other end.
Yeah, Kate is correct, because in the past, they didn't want any part of it, but I think it was due to the, you know, the person who was involved.
Since we're sending it to almost every other board in town, I think it would be good, if, if they don't want to, they don't have to, but at least give them the opportunity.
And for the, for the public meetings that we had, the charrettes, I did kind of harass everybody with invitations to those, so hopefully, this isn't the first time they're hearing about it.
Can we, can we recommend that, or I would like to recommend that we set a timetable for these other entities to provide feedback to us, so that it doesn't feel so open-ended, and we can try to bring that kind of next milestone to some closure and be able to...
Maybe have another special meeting in, how long do you think? Two weeks, a month?
Well, if you're going to ask boards and commissions to wait, and you're going to have to wait at least a month, because...
Right, and you've got Christmas coming up, I think?
Cemetery doesn't mean...
That's why I'm trying to...
Was there a target, was there a target timeline for you guys to submit a final draft for review and a public hearing?
The final draft is, is due to the state by February 26th, I want to say, we, but we can apply for an extension if we need to.
But that's, that's before the public hearing.
But that's before the public hearing, yes, because the project ends with the final draft, and then we take it through public hearing.
My thought would be maybe to provide that, that deadline for the other input would be January 31st, because if you get word out to them in the next week or so, that gives them two months, they can at least schedule it for a January meeting, respond by the end of January, and that gives you the chance to, to come back, the beginning of February.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the meeting schedule, but I might, if, if everybody has, all the commissions have a chance to meet by early January, mid-January, I would like it to be earlier than, the end of January. You know, we can look at the schedule, we can look at the meetings...
Sure, yeah, if you can get them, that would be good.
And ask for, you know, we can even, we can even talk to them and see if, what they think the possibility is of getting input back to us in, in early January sometime.
I was thinking they would have a December meeting, but then might not.
No.
Of course, I mean, that's part of it too. If they, if they want to comment, then they can hold a special meeting.
Yeah, I think zoning has a meeting in December.
So, did you want to say January 15th?
We'll, we'll, we'll check this, if we need a time, we can go January 15th or, or best, or best date, and then we'll, we'll check with them and see what their schedule is.
I mean, I could, I could also put in a transmission letter, if, if for some reason this date is impossible, please let me know, is, yeah, what day would work?
Yeah. One more question while Ken's still here. Sort of to piggyback on what Joan said earlier about the Cassett Cemetery, is there any mechanism that you folks contemplate in practice or in theory that preserves or, not necessarily preserves, but can modify view corridors to the extent that you want to preserve a certain, you know, view? And I'm thinking, standing atop of the Cassett Hill Cemetery, and, you know, you can see for whatever you can see, and what you see is predictable, and it's not an assault on the senses, et cetera, et cetera. No, it's probably hard to do that.
It is, it is hard, and it all depends on what your angle is and what you're trying to preserve as a view. When you're, when you're standing up on, on the, at the top of the cemetery, you have a, a, a good angle out across, because of topography, to see, it's, it's a, it's a great view from up there.
Yeah.
It's absolutely marvelous. And, and nothing's going to, nothing too significant is going to block that when you have all just headstones in between you and the, and the street line. You can, if, if it's a, if there's a difference in topography, and we did this in, I think in, in Middletown, with, with the idea that heights of buildings are limited, so that when you're on the public way, from a public, and, and all of this, of course, is, is where you are typically, in terms of, of views, is, is where you are in a public way, and what you're seeing from the public side of the buildings and, and the views or whatever else. You can have height limitations on, on buildings, and, but of course, anything over six feet and, and you've, or five feet, and you've blocked the view to, to most people in terms of building. But you can have a certain width to your setbacks on the side, so you have open spaces on the side. So you're not necessarily, unless you buy up all the land and say, you know, we're going to preserve this view and it's going to be the, the Grand Canyon, what you're, what you're saying is that you, you can build on your property, but we want to be able to have some public views as well too, so you'll have that opportunity.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't necessarily saying, you know, preserving an open space view, but more of, you know, making sure that we prevent the types of things that, you know, you don't want to see. You don't want to see a Pall Mall billboard when you're at a funeral, you know, it's, it's unsightly, or it's, you know, I say, an assault on the senses, but something that doesn't create a, an atmosphere that is, for lack of a better term, discalming.
And, and you took, you took an extreme position, idea of, of a billboard being put up, and in fact, you have signed regulations that can control billboards for, for exactly that, that purpose, so long as it's consistent throughout the, throughout the, throughout the town.
But we think this can contribute to that, can contribute to a, a more...
That's exactly what this is all about, trying, trying to get the, the design so that the character of the development not only looks better, but also fits with the kind of character that people think of when they think of Tiverton. What do you think of when you drive around, and what are, what are you seeing, and what are you visualizing, and that idea, what is, what is that particular character? And that's what we're trying to get across with these, with these guidelines and, and regulations.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, and just to play devil's advocate, because I was in a class today and that came up. I always seem to be playing the devil's advocate role. But, and to go to Peter, Peter's point about whether we are for it or against it and all that stuff. So, you know, we have a public hearing and, and what if, this is not what-if situation, what if there is an outcry from people who own property in this area, and they feel that they're being restricted, where they, they feel their rights are being taken away? I know that that has occurred in other areas of, of town, and we've had issues. So, you know, we always run that risk, Peter, if, if you have a public hearing, you got to listen to the people and what they, they feel about this. You may have some people that buy in and say, yeah, that's great, I, I have the same vision you have. But you're going to have, also have the other side of the coin, where you're going to have people that say, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, I have it zoned as general commercial right now, and I, you're, you're going to reduce my value of my property. True or not, if that's what they feel, that's what they feel. So you're going to have a mixture. So to say, you know, we're all for it now, yeah, let's proceed, well, that might change. Depends upon feedback.
My point is to, like, all you're saying, because public hearing is very important, and people should have a means to present what they have on their mind. But as a board or, or town council, we've got to explain to the public what the benefits are, pros and cons of this, and let them talk around and discuss it. And if it's still, scale is weighing that this is a better way to go, you have more guidelines here, more, not restriction, but better means to improve the area, design-wise and traffic flow and landscaping, et cetera, this, this gives it up, the town an opportunity to make a better, take a step forward in a better town. It is general commercial now, like you just said. So, and with the general commercial problems that we've been batting around many times, and many business people complaining about the general commercial regulations that poor, they're not uniform, et cetera, et cetera, I think this is a step forward. And if we can present that, this project to the, to the public, and if they buy into it, then I would say we go for it. But if there's a good opposition to it, reasonable or logical, then maybe we should change our minds. But I think we should get to a point where we go to a meeting, we know what we're talking about. That's my, good understanding what's going on.
And I, I'm of the opinion that as the town council, I have to maintain an open mind to take the feedback from, from the public, to see how they feel about it, and do the right thing. So that, that's, I just want to make sure that my position is, is clear, and I, I just playing devil's advocate, because it, it could change, you know, based upon feedback from the public, and that's the whole purpose of public hearings.
And I agree with Joan the same. I would commit to nothing until I hear what the people that live in these districts feel.
If I could just add one point too, I, I think it's important to the process that we note that we did make an effort to include the business community in the drafting. The Newport County Chamber of Commerce was part of the process from the very beginning. You know, there was outreach to, to property owners, to business owners... You know, there was outreach to, to property owners, to business owners to come in and talk about their concerns. And I think that the biggest change that, that the business owners will see is, is to the use table, and I think those changes will be to their benefit and will make the process a lot clearer. What we talked about a lot was, you know, let's, let's just either want something, we don't want something, let's not confuse people and say, okay, well, you can have a grocery store, but you can't have specialty foods. Well, what's someone going to do with that? So I think that the real benefit to the, to the business owners is going to be a sense of clarity and kind of getting away from micromanaging some of these, these retail uses. And the property owners as well, not just the tenants, because then the property owners are going to be able to fill these buildings with tenants and not necessarily have to worry, okay, I lost my tenant, now what can I put in that space? I'm so restricted with what I can do. So it goes beyond, you know, the design standards are obviously important, but the use table is what really affords a lot more opportunity within those spaces for the, the business owners and the property owners.
And if I could just say, I, I'm not in any way suggesting that you're not going to have, oh, keep an open mind and hear what's said at the public hearing and, you know, vote any particular way. All I was trying to say was, if you have problems with it now before you even get to the public hearing, want to get it out now because you're the first group that's going to be sold on the basic ideas and the issues. And then obviously, depending what happens at the public hearing, you might adopt it, you might change it, you might send it back, you might deny it outright, whatever, that's the whole purpose of the public hearing. And if it wasn't, then the public hearing would be a farce. But we do want to make sure that you're at least happy enough with it to go to that next stage. Or that a majority of you at least are happy enough to go to the next stage.
I'm happy enough for it to go to the next stage.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
The intent with this, Mr. Buckland and the Cecil Group have done is to help you, help the town put forth a better image. You don't want to see, your people are constantly clamoring at you to improve the tax base here, but in so doing, you need to have something that somebody wants to come to and work at, build in or live in. And so what they are attempting to do is create this image and a better image than what you have, because if it continues the way it is, you're probably going downhill. And they're trying to get you going back uphill. So when you put it together, then you do, yes, you need to listen to the public and there are going to be objections, absolutely. But the intent is, and as Ms. Kate said, the use table is probably better for businesses and then to have a better image for the people to come in and use those businesses and/or live there, you've got a positive thing to sell.
And that gets to Peter's point where we need to mention that at the public hearing and why that will help them. And that's what you're saying, Peter, we need to sell it.
Right. I mean, if you believe in it now or in the near future, or before you have, go to the public hearing, vet it out and say, I don't like this, and maybe we shouldn't think about it at all, why waste our time? But if you do like it, then you should work on it and sell yourself the idea.
I don't want to give the impression I don't like it, I do like it. I, I just want to hear what the public says.
Yeah, and like I said, it's very important. You can't, you can't skip that step.
Okay, well, I guess that being said, our 1A recommendation of the council will be put off for discussion after we get some input from a couple of the boards and commissions. And then as far as next steps, we'll return to that. And then make a recommendation of the council for the council to, to go to a public hearing and then vote on it. So with that being said, if there are no other points or questions to be brought up, I think we're done with the first part of the agenda. And you can maybe take five minutes and then move on to, to number two.
Before you do that, I want to thank the, the planning board and the, and the council for the audience. This has, this has been great. I wanted to tell you my appreciation for Kate Michaud as well too, for helping get this, this project through and working with statewide planning in, in the process. And to Andy Tice as well too, in, in helping in this process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buckland.
Just, just one thing, did, did you also include, probably including some neighborhood business area in the bliss corner area, blissful corner?
To, to further look into that, that section, that pie-shaped section.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, did you want to, did you want to take five minutes on the next item or did you want to take a five-minute recess before we get to the next item? Okay. I don't think five minutes on the next.